No longer allowed to be conducted on the property.
Right.
And perhaps we need to shift a little bit the locations of some of the descriptions with respect to the application of zoning, but as I read the zoning, as I understand it, or at least as I understand what they're allowed to do, they can operate a nursery, they can sell mulches and other materials in smaller quantities, so retail. They may not receive and deliver for installation elsewhere from this location. So, large volumes of mulches, stone, et cetera, need to be delivered elsewhere today if they're going to receive it, deliver. That is primarily number one, what we're trying to get permission to do.
Right.
Two, deals with the firewood, because firewood is allowed to be sold today in smaller quantities, and so larger quantities received in Canton are trucked over, stored in the barn, and are available for people to bring their pickups, their station wagons, buy them in small bundles. So, the receipt and the delivery side of the firewood business is what, another thing that we seek to restore from the location.
So, then that needs to be added to Section 2 definition.
Flip that, at least add it, or flip it over from three.
And then that brings, well, flip it over from three is fine, but it needs to be in there, but, you know, we need to know.
Mr. Dunn, would you wait a minute? I see that you're going to add to our edification, hopefully, rather than confusion.
And then that brings, yeah, and that brings up then a question, if you are allowing a certain quantity of firewood sales under nursery and a certain quantity of, or level of firewood sales under the special permit, how does somebody coming in, looking at that, know which is being sold where, and does it make more sense to have all of the firewood sales under this and none of it under the nursery? The same would be true of some of the mulch sales that are currently being allowed under the nursery. If there's a level that's allowed under nursery and a level, a higher level that's allowed under the special permit, does it make sense to move all of those under the special permit?
In my mind, the ability to receive, sell, deliver, the full volumes of each of the items that are delivered to the site, it's, the town ought to have better understanding and control over that, they ought to be incorporated into a single permit. That would be, now, my client, he'd shoot me for saying it, but I, I just think that from a simplification perspective, if there is a permit that's going to be granted, that is going to allow those things to happen, then it all ought to be, then that ought to be incorporated into the single permit. It's easier to control, it's easier to understand, it's easier to deal, it's easier for the owner to deal with. All of the materials that they receive, they sell, they deliver, it's all under one permit, firewood, mulch, et cetera, except for materials that they receive and spread on the site as part of how they care for the materials in the nursery. So, assuming that a special permit gets granted, it makes sense to do it. If for some reason, special permit were not to be granted, then they would essentially continue status quo, which is selling smaller quantities at retail, they just wouldn't be able to receive the larger items. So, I think from that, it makes sense in that big picture, to simply have the permit applied to all of the material, all of the activities that relate to sort of the landscaping stuff, which is materials that they receive, deliver, install elsewhere.
So, then I'm going to ask you for two and three, to rewrite them. So, two is only the stuff that would be authorized by the special permit, and three is only the stuff that exists underneath other authorizations, the nursery and agricultural, which I think hits to what you were saying as well, so that we don't see an overlap of mulch is allowed here, mulch is allowed there, and firewood's allowed here, and firewood's allowed there.
When we drew up this zoning, I remember specifically saying that we don't want people saying, "Oh, well, we were doing that for the nursery. Oh, well, that was a landscaping. Oh, well, that's our agricultural berry operation." We suggested that if you want a special permit to do these things, all your operations are going to be controlled by the special permit so that there can be proper monitoring, because if people are able to say, "No, no, 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 that wasn't landscaping," then we would be in the position which I don't want to be in, which I sort of think the Board of Appeals may be in now, that it just is a nightmare to enforce. And, and we did make this clear when we did the zoning, and I think that it's undoubtedly the case that the, if we were to issue a permit, that we would not allow this bifurcation. We would say, "If you want the permit..."
I'm going to be impartial agreement with you.
All right, you're going to be what?
Impartial agreement with you, impartial, not impartial. I am, I am, I am.
All right, well.
I agree with part of what you're saying, how does that sound? The caveat is Section 2 is only the stuff that's allowed under Section 2 of the zoning, so that is the landscaping business. It is the firewood, the Christmas trees and other holiday materials, the snow plowing, the materials that, I said firewood, and the materials that are related to this landscaping. So, this Section 2 is what needs to be in your Section 2. All of the stuff that's in that Section 2 should not be in Section 3.
Then the limits are set by the 2012.
Exactly.
And you don't want them to come in and say, "Well, that's the 2012 limits," but I'll reiterate some of the same points, but this is the nursery stuff, that's why there's more in that limit.
Yes.
I understand your point.
It says 30 years of 2012, there's 40 because it's...
Where is the dispute?
The dispute is, I think you were saying, all activities should be under...
Oh, no, 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 I, I just meant the landscaping.
There's still the nursery, yes, okay, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, because the nursery and the, possibly the agricultural is separate, so, yeah.
So, I...
If we know what they are.
I hear you, I will work on a redraft, and as you refer that, there is, I didn't mention it earlier, but the snow and ice activity, they have plowed this winter, you certainly would have wanted them plowing, every available plow is a good thing, but they have two plows, they use on two of their trucks, and they help municipality, they do private plowing, they do it, stage it from inside the barn, it's quiet, it's only during snow and ice emergencies, but it is part of the activity that they want to continue to do.
Okay, now, Mr. Dunn, do you have a question that you think can't wait?
I just wanted to add, because I know that this is...
Well, come on up, introduce yourself and...
Matthew Dunn, I represent Mr. Joe Enning and Mr. Rowe, and I just wanted to, it seems like you guys have already addressed the Dover Amendment issue, but the activities that would need a special permit, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Corcoran at all, but in my head, the activities that would need a special permit are the ones that were precluded by the ZBA in the September 26 decision, and I say that because the issue was before the Superior Court on two occasions, once before Judge Davis, once before Judge Wilson, and they precluded, they upheld the ZBA decision and precluded the uses that the ZBA prohibited on the site. So, that wouldn't have occurred if those uses were exempt by the Dover Amendment. Are you following me here?
Mm-hmm.
Because they wouldn't have needed the special permit, or they wouldn't, Judge Davis or Judge Wilson wouldn't have issued the injunctive order, because those issues, those uses would have been exempt.
Well, we've asked for a specification of the uses that they believe are Dover Amendment uses, and that should be helpful. As far as the court may have prohibited things, if the zoning allows it and they apply for it, then we are in a position of granting a special permit for the activity, if the zoning permits.
No, I understand that, and that's, I'm just saying is that some uses aren't there are potentially covered by the Dover Amendment, which they wouldn't need a special permit, even under the zoning bylaw that they're now applying for. But the uses that would need a special permit under the zoning bylaw that they're applying for are those uses that were prohibited or prescribed by the ZBA back in September 26, and I say that because those decisions were challenged with a Dover Amendment argument in the Superior Court, and the court found that that, that Dover Amendment was not applicable to those uses. That's all.
Okay, now, back to you, Mr. Corcoran. I guess we're still, we're in the question phase, yes.
Page eight, hours. You're page eight, so it's coming under F Operations, and then you've got the title Hours of Operations for Landscape Business Uses on seven, page eight, and you've got Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, under the zoning, which is 4R, that, those hours, the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, is the sales office hours, so that should be clarified. And then the next thing is you've got, provided that the use of equipment, including bobcats for loading and unloading planted materials may occur, you have Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00, Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00, and Sunday, 10:00 to 3:00. If you look at 7E, where you have onsite traffic and loading deliveries, it says, "Such loading and use of noisy equipment may only occur between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Saturday, unless an earlier start of no more than one hour is shown to be reasonably necessary for the operations of the landscaping business." So, if you're allowing that extra hour, we need to talk about, you need to show that it's reasonably necessary, then you have loading on Sunday from 10:00 to 3:00, but if the zoning says there shall be no loading or use of noisy equipment on Sundays, provided that the use of equipment for loading of planted nursery materials, which are not sold as part of landscaping services, shall be permissible between the hours of 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM. So, you can load for nursery, but not for landscaping, and that needs to be clarified in here. And I think verbally you'd said that deliveries were, it was a different time you'd given, I think you'd said 10:00 to 3:00, and just to clarify, you do have it correct, and the application, 9:00 to 2:00 on Monday through Friday.
I think I said 10:00 to 2:00.
Or 10:00 to 2:00, I can't remember which one it was.
10:00 to 2:00 is for the handling of dumpster.
Okay, that might have been it, I couldn't remember what you said.
And that's consistent, I think, with the zoning, and the other deliveries are 9:00 to 2:00 or 9:00 to 3:00.
9:00 to 2:00, yeah.
And that's consistent with the zoning.
That is consistent with the zoning, so, so just have a look at, make sure that you clarify the sales office hours versus the loading hours, and make sure that the loading hours are consistent with Section 7E of the zoning.
I thought we were correct, but I will double check now.
Okay, great.
The 1967 permit says as follows, in Article 1, "No parking whatsoever shall take place on Hillside Street by automobiles of customers or by automobiles or trucks used by applicants in connection with the greenhouse. Affendants shall provide a parking area which shall have a capacity more than sufficient to take care of any parking by customers." And you are talking about use of Hillside Street and Forest Street for parking. It would seem to me that that's not on the table, and that there has to be, if you're going to have big events, that's fine, but you've got to be respectful of the neighbors, and you've got to provide parking for them. Either that, or you've got to go to the Board of Appeals and tell them that you want them to allow parking on Hillside Street and Forest Street, and...
It is a practice that has grown over time since the 1967 permit was put in place, and it is a very occasional special purpose type of event, and they do cooperate with the Milton Police, will take, to provide details to manage parking. We will take a second look at that with respect to how we would entertain parking under those very limited uses, which are not related to the landscaping uses, but they are related to other uses on the site.
The number of people who don't have sufficient parking use buses for events from a...
Assuming that there's a reasonably convenient location to bus to and from.
You have that separate location on Hillside, don't you? You can park there, I mean, you can walk from there.
You can park and walk from there.
Out of these events, it seems to be to be outside and walking.
That's not, that's reasonable to consider.
And just again on hours, when you're looking at that, pages 19 and 20, pages 19 and 20 also refers to hours, so just make sure they're all consistent, and 21.
Okay, these questions don't have to be exclusive, we know that where you are, and you're going to be available as questions may arise, but let's open the, the meeting up to, hearing up to hear from people who would like to be heard, on a matter pertinent to this application. Yes, sir?
I think this may be the appropriate, my name is Dr. Martin Dunn. I live with my wife Carol at 50 Briarbrook Street. Our land extends from Parkwood Drive, Briarbrook Street, and Barbary Lane. We built our home here 45 years ago, and several years later, added a barn for two horses and a dog. We have been the only family in our home, and presently, we are one of the three original families who have lived in this neighborhood since it was developed in the late 1970s. With the exception of one meeting, when there was a bad snowstorm, and I thought the meeting would be canceled, it was not, I have attended all of the meetings before several different committees during the past two years relevant to Thayer Nursery. I have lost count of the exact number. I do not intend to speak tonight on the legal issues of this permit, because I do not feel qualified to do so. I will leave that to Attorney Dunn, no relation, and Attorney Corcoran. However, based upon my experience as the team leader of 60 medical missions to developing countries, where I followed my patients in their shanty town homes before and after surgery, I feel very qualified to speak about strong odors and loud noises, which were present for 24 hours, seven days a week. Thankfully, we have neither in our neighborhood. My relationship with the Oldfield family has existed for many years. I remember Bob Oldfield, father of Maggie and Josh, who grew up with my oldest daughter, Tracy, serving many years on the school committee in Milton, more than once, he served as chairman of that committee, and always acted in the best interests of our children. He was a member of the Conservation Committee, and for many years, a town meeting member elected by the residents of this neighborhood. Maggie and Josh have continued his legacy for children by having Easter egg hunts, doll carriage, and bicycle parades, a putting green, et cetera, on their property. We are so fortunate to live in an area known as horse country. One is only to walk to the beginning of Parkwood Drive and look across Hillside Street to the large white barn with corrals outside the stable several horses. Just three houses down towards Randolph Ave, there is a similar sized boarding stable with corrals out front bordering Hillside Street. Eighteen wheelers were always delivering hay and feed to these stables. Did this ever bother me, right at the end of my street? Of course not. We were privileged to live in horse country. On any given day, depending upon the direction that the wind was blowing, were there any odors? Of course there were. Horses from the stables on Hillside Street were always walked either with or without mounted riders in front of our home. When the snow clears, I can assure you that every single day, horses with riders on will walk along Hillside Street, up Forest Street, to enter the trails up in the Blue Hills, and then they will return afterwards. Lisa Curtis, daughter of the original owners of 23 Parkwood Drive, constantly rode a pony around the neighborhood and stopped to allow children to pat the pony. For our family, it was wonderful to be in horse country. So wonderful, in fact, that with the blessing and approval of all of our budding neighbors, we built a two-stall barn on our property, not only so that our daughters could ride, but also so that they could develop the discipline of caring for animals. Dixie and El Sid, our two horses, were the neighborhood pets. Not a day passed that the children in the neighborhood did not show up to give the horses an apple or a carrot through the corral fence. Never once did we ever have a complaint from a neighbor about an odor, our eighteen wheelers delivering hay or feed. Parenthetically, it is of interest to note that once our daughters finished riding, we donated El Sid to the then MDC police in the Blue Hills, and Dixie to a farm for special needs children. El Sid received extensive media coverage when he went into Houghton's Pond and allowed his MDC police officer to jump off his back and save a little girl from drowning. El Sid, an alumnus of this neighborhood, we were so proud. I remember one of our neighbors loading up his large golf-type vehicle of children, probably his grandchildren, and riding around the neighborhood. Halloween was a special event, when a large hay wagon pulled by a tractor would let the children get off and in their costumes go up to each door for trick-or-treat. I remember Ron Lucio, who would hitch up his horse to a cart or sleigh, depending on the weather, and occasionally with other people on board, would leave his home and barn where he and his wife Pam lived, drive down Forest Street, turn right on Hillside Street, and enter Parkwood Drive, proceed around the entire neighborhood, and then back to his barn. Both the children and adults loved to see him come, for we were in horse country. Did we ever have noise in the neighborhood? Of course we did. The home, which for many years directly abutted our property and was literally adjacent to our backyard, had an active tennis court. The home across the street had a tennis court and basketball court with lights on it, which during the spring, summer, and fall was very active at night. Did this affect our lives? Of course not. We lived in a wonderful neighborhood, and we were all friends. It was great to hear the children, and in many instances, their parents enjoying themselves. I cannot tell you how many times on Saturday, and occasionally on Sunday, at 7:00 AM, I was awakened by the noise of a power lawnmower from any one of the landscapers mowing lawns in our area. Did it bother me? Of course not. The landscapers needed to begin work at that time, especially if there had been rain earlier in the week, in order to make a living and keep our neighborhood beautiful. It is a strong recommendation from my wife Carol and me that Thayer Nursery be granted a permit by this committee. We agreed the committee, excuse me, we urged the committee to establish reasonable guidelines and monitor them with unaccompanied visits, unannounced visits, whether it be by the building commissioner or a similar person appointed by the appropriate town in Milton Committee. It should not be monitored by self-appointed policing members of the neighborhood, for this reminds me of two experiences that I've had in my life, which I would never want to see, not only in Milton, but the United States. I remember going through Checkpoint Charlie at the Berlin Wall with my wife and daughter. After passing into Communist East Berlin, and with guards on top of the wall with machine guns and taking pictures, we were ordered to get off the bus and leave everything behind except our passports, which would be individually checked outside by the Communist guards. They also entered the bus, they went through everything that we'd left behind. Then they wheeled large mirrors with long handles on them beneath the bus to see if there was anything attached to it. The second incident happened in Cuba several years ago, when I was attending a meeting of surgeons. I wanted to share with a Cuban colleague a surgical technique that I was using. We were to meet in the lobby of hotel, I arrived first and selected a table. When my colleague arrived, he motioned me to another table in the middle of the room. He then told me that the table which I had selected was close to a plant, which he said was probably bugged. These types of activity, we do not want. Establish penalties, and if Thayer does not follow them, then the committee should enforce the penalties. In granting the permit and establishing the guidelines with appropriate penalties when indicated, this neighborhood will once again flourish with unity. This is what my wife and I want for our daughters. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with you.
Thank you. Who wants to be heard on this application? Mr. Dunn?
Again, my name is Matthew Dunn, I'm an attorney, I represent Philip Joening and John Rowe, no relation to Dr. Dunn.[1624.23][1624.23](Laughter). And I can attest that he has been at two, every meeting I've been to anyways, which is a lot. There are a few preliminary matters that I'd just like to talk about before we get going here. It's my understanding that there's a, that the application before the board is a new application submitted by Thayer. Just from a procedural standpoint, I'm just kind of curious, because there is some implications with the fact that there is another application that's, that's out there, if that has been formally withdrawn. Does anyone know that?
I believe it has been revised, but Mr. Corcoran can answer that?
I don't know that it's been formally withdrawn, I will check that tomorrow, if it's not, I will formally withdraw it, so that certainly we should...
As I understand it, the application was filed, it was revised a few times, and then, most recently, a...
A new application.
A new final, a new final revised application, but it isn't as though, I mean, we're still, it's still a hearing on the original application as revised. In other words, the original application is still, they filed an original application, they paid the fee for the original application. This, yes?
We started a new public hearing.
Yeah.
We have a new application. What are the time limits? Are they based on the new application or the old application?
That's sort of what I'm getting at. Under Section 9 of 40A, I think it's 90 days from the date of the first public hearing that the decision is due, and just to go chronologically through where we are, I believe the original application was filed on October 21st of 2014, and I haven't done the math, but it, just reviewing that section of the zoning act, I think we're, we're pretty close, or if not exceeded. That's why I was asking about it.
But we did, we did start the hearing on that application timely.
Right.
And then eventually, the hearing was canceled, and perhaps that has triggered the decision requirement. The fact of, you should consider how you are going to remove this as a potential problem by tomorrow.
I will, I understand the issue, what I had understood, clarify it tomorrow, is that this was a new application. What I had understood, clarify it tomorrow, is that this was a new application.
But if the last application were still around...
There's a potential that it would be constructively approved.
Then there's a potential that the canceled hearing ended the hearing, which it did, and that the time for decision is therefore running.
For the convenience of the board, and certainly for Mr. Dunn, it is, I want to make sure that there is a proper consideration of the application. The application date ought to be March 11th, or whatever the date that was received for this application. I treated it as a new application. I took, we took a combination of materials that were submitted and supplemented. We honed them into what I think is a single application, so I think the dates were, well, we have time. I'm not suggesting that, so we're no longer considering what was originally filed, we're considering what is present for you.
Right. What's in the most recent application, but you're going to write a letter...
I will write a letter.
And it's going to, you're going to review it, and I'm going to review it, and we're going to be satisfied that we're not going to run into problems.
So, along those lines, if it's a new application, and I don't mean to get hyper-technical here, I had previously submitted a memorandum to the board that had asked to be included in the present case file for the new application that was submitted on January 8th of 2015.
Is it January 7th?
January 7th, yeah.
Right. I think that...
I have no objection to...
So, we will, Tim, if you can distribute, maybe I'll give this to you, give this to you for copying.
I think everyone has a copy.
We all have a copy.
This is the January 7th one.
This is the January 7th one.
And just distribute it tomorrow.
Double-check, cut that way.
Yeah.
Do you want me to redate it? I just put my initials next to it or something?
You want to redate it?
Do you want to review it?
No, I'd redate it as today, so it's, to clarify that it's part of this application. Doesn't matter to me. I mean, this is all being recorded.
No, that's fine. It doesn't, the date on it is fine. You're submitting it now, and that's fine.
Just one question. I don't know if anything in the new application changes what you wrote before.
It doesn't.
Okay, you've had a chance to have a look at it then.
Yeah, I did. Briefly, yeah, but I did. So just to bring everybody up to speed on where we are, because I think some people are new to this stage of where we're at. Again, the original application was submitted on October 21st of 2014. The planning board did a preliminary assessment of the application on November 6th of 2014. The planning board members, Mr. Corcoran and myself, my clients in the Oldfields, Josh and Maggie, did a site inspection on Saturday, I believe it was November 15th, 2014.
Excuse me, Mr. Dunn, but this is one reason why I say, like to say that it's a revised application, so that our site visit, which is not part of the hearing, can be...
Just to be very brief here, because it leads into where I'm going with this new application. An original hearing, the hearing on the original application was on January 8th of 2015. There was some additional information that was submitted by Thayer in response to the board's suggestions on November 6th of 2014. Additional information was presented by Thayer on February 12th, which was the next hearing on its original application. As Mr. Whiteside has indicated, the March 4th, 2015 meeting was canceled, and here we are on March 25th, with still additional information being submitted to the board. So, and I'll get into this a little bit, and I did get into it in my memo, but it's very difficult to follow, at least for me, what is being proposed, how Thayer proposes to meet all the requirements that are very specific, and there's a strict provision in the bylaw amendment that requires Thayer to meet every single one of the requirements of the bylaw. So, again, like I said, I'll get into this a little bit more in depth, but there's been five hearings here with five submissions, and it's just, it's difficult to follow. And that's my only point here. But sort of a larger issue here, and I know that there's a desire to sort of go by this issue at 100 miles an hour, because we're so far down the road here, but it's very important, and it's going to be important if, should there be any later proceeding. And that deals with the fact that whether the applicant can seek the zoning relief that the applicant is seeking here. And just, you know, keeping in mind that, you know, neither myself or my clients had any say in the wording of the 1967 special permit. They had no say in the wording of the 1987 special permit. They had little of any say in the language that was used in the bylaw amendment itself. And all those things govern who can apply, or who has standing to apply for the special permit that Thayer Nursery Corporation is seeking here. So if you look at the situation twofold, first, I'm going to read you the requirements of the bylaw amendment, because it's really broken into two parts as to who is eligible. The first part states, "In a resident zone on a lot or lots on which a landscaping business was being conducted in July of 2012, the planning board may grant a special permit for landscaping business on such lot or lots, provided that the applicant or applicants or their predecessor and interest on that date held a special permit or use variance issued by the Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 3A, 4, or 6 with regards to all or part of any such lot." Now, that's really a two-part requirement. The first part has to deal with what was actually happening on the property, that they seek a landscaping, or they seek a special permit under the bylaw amendment in 2012. And that is, they have to be conducting a landscaping business, I suppose, as that term is defined in the bylaw. And that's not really in dispute. The portion that is in dispute is the second part of the requirement, and that is, and both have to be met, provided that the applicant or their predecessor and interest held a special permit on that date. And that's where I'm going to start off with regards to my memo. And again, the bylaw amendment states in paragraph eight that the planning board can only grant a special permit where all conditions are met, and that provision that I just read is a condition of granting a special permit. As a prerequisite to apply for a special permit, the bylaw amendment requires, and as I just stated, that you have to be operating a landscaping business, and I'm paraphrasing here, in July of 2012, and the applicant either has to hold a special permit, which I think everyone in agreement in the room can concede that Thayer Nursery Corporation did not hold a special permit to conduct a landscape, landscaping business in 2012, or their predecessor and interest. And that's really the point that I'm going to drill down here on. In the application, the Oldfield Family LLC indicates that it is the owners of the properties 217, 237, 270 Hillside Street, and 0 and 24 Forest Street. And Thayer Nursery states that it operates there as a tenant. Thayer Nursery further states that in 1967, the Oldfields, i.e. Robert and Margaret Oldfield, were granted a special permit by the Milton Zoning Board of Appeals, and that in 1987, the special permit was amended by the bylaws so as to allow Lot 1B to be used in conjunction with the nursery. Thayer Nursery claims that from 1963 to the present, the Oldfield family has resided on the property, has held an ownership of Thayer Nursery Corporation, and has operated continuously as a nursery agribusiness. The ownership part of the property, in Thayer's sort of succession and interest to the interest in the property, as opposed to the interest in the permit, is not in dispute either. Attorney Corcoran has provided deeds and leases that show that Margaret Oldfield and her husband, the Oldfield family, the Oldfield LLC and Josh Oldfield own the property, and that they, under various leases, leased the property to Thayer Nursery. So, Thayer Nursery on the property as a tenant is not in dispute. What's in dispute, again, is Thayer Nursery's rights, and this is separate from the property, whether they're allowed to undertake the uses that were bestowed upon Robert Oldfield and Margaret Oldfield in the special permit in 1967, as amended in 1987. Again, the applicants do not argue that the Oldfield Family LLC or Thayer Nursery Corporation held a special permit or use variance issued by the Board of Appeals in July of 2012. Rather, they imply that they are successors in interest to the rights bestowed by the Milton ZBA in 1967 and 1987 special permits to the Oldfield family. However, the express terms of the 1967 special permit, as amended by the 1987 special permit, specifically limit who can hold those rights. And again, if you have a copy of my memo, both the 1987 special permits are attached, as is the copy of the bylaw amendment that's at issue here. In paragraph 10 of the 1967 special permit, the ZBA stated, "This permit runs to you, i.e. Robert and Margaret Oldfield, who were the applicants, personally, including any assistance only, and shall not be assigned or transferred to any other person." While the 1987 special permit amended paragraph number 10 of the 1967 special permit, it too restricted the assignment and transfer of the rights granted to the ZBA, by the ZBA. In paragraph number four, which is, paragraph number four of the 1987 special permit, the ZBA stated, "Paragraph 10 of the conditions, limitations, and safeguard is amended to read. This permit runs to the applicant, i.e. Robert and Margaret Oldfield, and their children personally, including any assistance only, and shall not be assigned or transferred to any other person. Such conditions and limits in limiting a special permit to use by the applicant or their children are recognized as valid in Massachusetts." As the plain language provided in both the 1967 and 1987 special permits makes clear, only Robert Oldfield, Margaret Oldfield, and their children can personally hold the rights in the special permit bestowed by the ZBA. As it's stated and implied in both the, both permits, that the intent of this limitation was to keep the business in, grant the special permit in the residential district and keep it to a minimal level. Those rights, the rights from the 1967 and 87 special permits, cannot be assigned or transferred to anyone else, and they said it, the ZBA said it not once but twice, including the Oldfield Family LLC and Thayer Nursery Corporation. Accordingly, by the very terms of the 1967 and 1987 special permits, the applicants cannot be a successor in interest, because those rights cannot be assigned or transferred to them. Stated differently, the Oldfield Family LLC and Thayer Nursery Corporation are not Robert Oldfield, Margaret Oldfield, or their children. They are legally distinct entities. And there's two cases that are on point. First is this Spanish case that's cited, stating that a corporation is an independent legal entity, separate and distinct from its shareholders, officers, and employees. More significantly is the next case that's cited, which is the New England Pro Tour case, which states, or holds for the proposition, that a corporation, even a corporation wholly owned by a single person, is a distinct and separate legal entity. The applicants cannot possess the same rights as Robert Oldfield, Margaret Oldfield, and their children, because the 1967 special permits expressly prohibit it. It is exoteric that one cannot be a successor in interest if the interest that they claim cannot be validly assigned or transferred to them by the person who they claim to be their predecessor in interest. In this case, the applicants cannot be a successor in interest to the Oldfield family members' rights in the 1967 and 1987 special permits, because the very terms of those decisions expressly state that there can be no valid assignment or transfer of those rights to anyone else, including the applicants. Consequently, Thayer Nursery Corporation, the Oldfield family, were simply operating the commercial ventures on the property in July of 2012, without any legal right to do so. They cannot point to any legally recognizable predecessor in interest that held a special permit or use variance issued by the Board of Appeals in July of 2012. This is an eligibility prerequisite under the bylaw amendment, and as Thayer Nursery and the Oldfield family cannot satisfy it, they are ineligible for the zoning relief that they seek. Thayer Nursery is a successor in interest only to the property rights of the Oldfield family. They are not a successor to its use rights as provided for in the 1967 and 1987 special permits. So, I think that that's a major issue for this board to address, and I'm curious, and I read Attorney Corcoran's response, but the predecessor in interest, how Thayer gets around Thayer Nursery Corporation and the Oldfield Family LLC, get along the requirements of the bylaw amendment that they sponsored, I don't know how they do, with the fact that there's these two requirements, both need to be met as a prerequisite, and they only satisfy one of them.
I, if you had your book, which you should have gotten a book, but in any event, the application for approval of the special permit, it's interesting. They say owner, Oldfield Family LLC, applicant, Maggie Oldfield and Josh Oldfield, and then company, Thayer Nursery.
But on the second page, especially...
I understand. This is the first page.
Okay.
And on the second page, it says, "Application," and then it says, "Name, Oldfield Family LLC and Thayer Nursery Corp." Whether that's, I'm just pointing out that the first page says the applicants are Maggie and Josh Oldfield.
And if I can, I'll address that.
Okay.
To the extent that the applicants may argue that Margaret Oldfield and F. Joshua Oldfield are the applicants for the special permit currently sought by this board, they too lack standing to pursue such zoning relief. Neither own the property. The Oldfield Family LLC does, and they rent it to Thayer Nursery Corporation. Moreover, neither Maggie nor Josh will be a party operating the commercial ventures for which the special permit is sought and needed. Thayer Nursery Corporation will be the one engaging in those activities. As such, neither Maggie nor Josh are parties in interest to the present zoning relief they seek. Accordingly, they are not eligible applicants under the bylaw amendment.
Well, this is, you know, it may have been a, it may be an omission, but I don't see, where is, where in the bylaw are the proper applicants listed? The people who can, or is it a matter of just state law that in order to be an applicant, but in order to be an applicant, you have to have an interest usually, and they have...
Have no interest.
Well, they have an interest in...
The corporation.
That they own the corporations.
Who else owns the corporation?
I don't know.
Neither do I. I know that it's not, I know that the corporation is not the Oldfield family. I know that that's a legally distinct entity.
Well, what I'm saying is this, that you raise an issue, and I don't have any definitive answer, and maybe, Brian, we should seek Mr. Flynn's advice on this. But we will determine that tomorrow.
It's difficult, it's difficult, not only are we doing this, you know, on five different occasions, where the goalposts are moving for anybody who opposes this, now we don't even know who the applicant is. So, I mean...
Well, on the application, it's listed as Josh and Maggie, and on the second page of, there is a possibly ambiguous reference to, it says, "Application, landscape business use date," and then it has name.
Well, it says applicant, Thayer Nursery Corporation. That's what it says.
Oh, in the, right.
The application page, you have this? Yeah, yeah, I was just making sure.
Okay.
But that's the old one.
Look, I don't... Look, I don't, look, there are, this is something that we will undoubtedly have to figure out, but if Maggie and Josh Oldfield were in fact the applicants, that would be one thing, and if their corporation, whether their predecessor's an interest to the corporation, it seems to me that since the special permit for the nursery use runs to them, it would behoove them to be the applicants, because otherwise, if they say that, you know, because the special permit for the nursery says that they shall run the nursery.
I'm not trying to be overly contentious here. I'm just saying that it's extremely difficult for anybody opposing this application, which my clients, as you know, do, to meaningfully present an argument when they don't know who the applicant is, because it's going to frame your decision, who the applicant is. Because if it's Maggie and Josh, what's going to happen if the special permit is granted to them? Are they going to assign it to Thayer Nursery Corporation? And can that even be done? Or is it Thayer Nursery Corporation who can operate independently here? And so, I mean, this opens up something that is very confusing for me.
There are loose ends. No question about it, and, but we're not going to, we're not going to be able to tie those loose ends tonight.
Right, but how can we even proceed on the application if we don't know who the applicant is?
We can proceed on the basis that
Who can proceed?
The board can proceed, because
On what, though? On whose application?
I think we could certainly continue it to tomorrow night to allow the Oldfield family to address the application, the issue of who is the applicant and what the ownership is. I think that's fair for them to have heard you tonight, and then to come back and address it to us.
So you're suggesting this is a good time to continue?
I think it's a very, unless there's somebody else who wishes to speak, yeah.
I just have one more question on the specific, on the specific issue. So one question seems to be applicant. Is there a second question here about the validity of the, whether or not there was a special permit in 2012?
Well, I don't think that there's any dispute that the 1967 and 1987 special permit, Maggie and Josh have rights in that special permit. It's, I mean, it's stated there. Where we have a disconnect is whether Maggie and Josh can transfer, whether they're proceeding on their own, or whether Thayer Nursery Corporation is proceeding. Because if Thayer Nursery Corporation is proceeding, then we're saying that they can't do that, right? I mean, because those rights cannot be assigned or transferred by the very terms of both those permits.
So, as I understand, you said, the fact that there was a landscaping business in 2012, not in dispute, we all agree that existed, we all agree that the property ownership transferred as it did to the current owners, no problem with that. The question is the standing based on the special permit.
If I may, just on that issue, the question is whether a predecessor in interest to the applicant, whether the applicant is Maggie and Josh, or whether it is a corporation that involves Maggie and Josh. The predecessor to that entity are Maggie and Josh. Maggie and Josh had rights under the permit, under the previous permits, or the permits that exist from 67 and 87. Whether or not they can be, those permits can be assigned is irrelevant. The question is whether a predecessor to this applicant had an interest in that permit. That's the ticket into the door. It isn't whether those permits could be assigned, it doesn't matter. This is a new permit, this is a permit for landscaping use that'll be issued by this board. It's different from the permit that the permits existed.
But if Maggie and Josh are running the nursery and the agricultural business, having a different entity doing the landscaping is, well, for one thing, it would seem to me that it would not be in accordance with the original special permit, saying that they have to do it.
There's a separate issue.
Well, I understand that, but it's an issue that you've got to explain to us.
And it's an issue more broadly, in terms of other questions that you raised tonight, vis a vis, how does the entire site operate, under which permit, whether it's one permit, whether it's multiples. We will come back to you tomorrow with a clearer decision.
I think that your suggestion, Emily, that we entertain a motion to adjourn.
To continue, to continue.
All right, Tim, if you want to come up and be heard, that will be fine.
And then continue, not adjourn.
Then we will continue.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My name's Pamela Florrie, I live at 44 Forest Street. I had submitted a letter to the board prior to the meeting that was canceled, and I hope everyone got a chance to read it.
We're going to have to renew that letter, because as you know, it's a new proceeding that we're in.
Right, okay.
You sent out that letter, however, today.
I got it today.
I thought I saw it previously, if I emailed.
All right, let's
Can I resubmit it now, then?
I have it for February 20th, yeah.
Okay, the February 20th letter will become part of the record here.
Okay. Did anyone get a chance to read it? No.
I read it.
Oh, you did, okay.
But it was a while ago.
Okay. Well, I'll highlight my major concerns with this application. First and foremost, relocating the commercial landscape business to my property line from the back of the property is not only unfair, it's absurd. Especially since the nursery has taken the steps to move the noise and odor away from other neighbors, they're basically moving it next to me. And I urge the board to have the landcare yard located as far away from neighbors as possible, there are areas to the neck, to the side of the front barn, and to the, next to the main entrance, and I think that would be more appropriate. The plan in the back proposes a 30-foot setback for the 10-foot fence, which is really going to be 12 feet above the line, with trees planted in between abutters and the fence. This should apply to all the abutters. The 8-foot fence proposed on my side will be ineffective since I will get the 18-wheeled trucks, it sounds like, just about every day, and the trucks are 12 and 1/2 feet high. And all the fencing, all the fencing should be no less than 12 feet in height, and again, no less than 30 feet from a budder. So I think what they proposed in the back would only be fair to have next to me as well. So the fence would be 30 feet over with plantings in between. I have a problem with the seasonal farmers and artisan markets. When they held them before, I could hear voices and the music, and I just, this is a residential neighborhood, and I don't feel they belong here. I enjoy the, and support the farmer's market in lower mills, and if the Oldfields want to host one, they should find a public place to hold them. Again, I thought this application was for landscaping, not for retail shopping. And also under Section O, under the rules, it states if music is outdoors with a loudspeaker amplifier, they should seek approval. This should also be prohibited?
This is prohibited.
Okay, then they're asking for that? Okay. And I agree with you with the no Sunday landscaping services, so that was another issue I think you've addressed already.
It's loading, yeah.
Okay.
It's loading.
The lighting plan that shows the 22-foot-high light on the southern peak of the garden shop does affect me, and they're saying it's necessary for security, but they do have a security gate that they close every night, so that should be lowered as well. And I also ask, would the nursery be required to replace bobcats and other noisy machinery with electric vehicles as they need to be replaced? And I do have concerns regarding enforcement of the special permit. Will there be fines for violations? And is there a point of revoking the permit if they persist? And I also urge the board to review the permit annually, given the history of violations in the past. My letter is a little more detailed, but I appreciate you letting me speak.
Well, thank you. We will, we're going to be taking this up tomorrow, and perhaps we'll see you then.
Okay. At what time tomorrow, Alex?
We continued the other, the condo to 7:00, I believe.
The condo, it's the same, Bill just told me to do 6:45 for the condo, 7:00 for Thayer.
I think we announced 7:00, so we should, yeah, we did just announce it at 7:00. So make it 7:15, I don't imagine, because I think
We can do, let's make it 7:15.
I think 7:15 would make sense.
People would, you know, if they have to listen to a little bit of condo zoning, that's probably good for them.
Thank you. Like I said, I've got all the fuel, I've got all the trucks, I have it all now, and they moved it from the back because of these issues, and I just don't think it's fair to have it next to me.
All right, now, yes, we are going to continue the hearing to tomorrow at
7:15.
7:15, and we will now vote on whether to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. We are now adjourned.